Assembly Government Affairs asks all the communities to come give a little presentation on their community. It's an on-action item. It's just a way to explain, you know, how Carson City's doing, what is not doing, what is doing right, in front of Assembly Government Affairs. That's going on at 8:30 tomorrow morning in Assembly Government Affairs. And there's, I just asked the city manager to send out the PowerPoint to all the board members and any members of the public who want it. We can put it up on the website, but it won't be given until tomorrow morning, so put it up on the website tomorrow, I think is the time.
We will.
Okay? All right. But it's just informational only. We get asked every year to do it. And I'm going to introduce the city manager, and he's going to take the lead on it. I'm going to be the pot and plant.
Mr. Mayor, for Item 23 Alpha, we have several candidates for the Citizen-at-Large, for the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Commission. I'm going to take them, they're all here, I'm going to take them up in order as they are listed on your agendas. So I'm going to start with Jerry Thurman. The others, I'm going to bring out into the hallway, and then one at a time, as they come, I'll bring them in the room, and that'll be the time for you to ask them your questions.
Well, then, let's take up Item 23A, and you can have...
Hi, Jerry, how are you doing today?
Very good, thank you.
Good afternoon to you.
Thank you.
This is for the position for the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Advisory Committee, Citizens Committee. I don't know, have you been through this process before?
No, I have not.
What happens is, we each get to ask a couple of questions, and you can ask us any questions you want. So, you know, there'll be, and we usually try to ask the same questions of everybody, so that there's nobody that gets an unfair advantage. So I usually go first, and what I'd just like to ask is, kind of get you started, is, one, why do you want to do this? Why do you want to be appointed? And two, give us your thoughts on what redevelopment is all about and what it should be used for.
Well, the reason that I'd like to be involved is, I have seen a makeover in the downtown corridor over the last 40 years that has continued to progress and develop into a much more appealing look. And from what I'm seeing now, this is really going to be a major adjustment to the downtown corridor. I had just thought that I would like to be involved in that process, that strictly with no particular axe to grind, if you will, just as a citizen-at-large, to put my input into this. That, I guess, is really what I'm up to.
Supervisor Abell, then we'll go this way, then next time we'll go that way.
Okay. Hi, Jerry.
Hi.
If you, as a member of RAC, were tasked with developing design standards for the downtown corridor, what specific elements would be on your radar to improve upon or add?
Well, that question is pretty well-loaded. I think I would certainly be depending on my computer to help me out with a lot of questions. I don't, you know, I'm not a civil engineer or anything along those lines. I just feel that the appearance of the downtown corridor, I have some visions of years ago, how it appeared, and I think that that is part of what they're trying to achieve at this time. And, I don't know, I guess that pretty much sums up, but I would have to rely on information from other sources on some of the technical things. I certainly don't possess that.
Hi, Jerry.
Hi.
And my question is, what is your understanding of tax increment funding for redevelopment?
My understanding of it is a one-eighth of a cent sales tax that will be utilized to develop the downtown corridor, as well as a new achievement community center.
Let me rephrase that. I'm talking about the tax increment funding for the redevelopment districts, not the infrastructure sales tax.
I don't have knowledge of that at this time. I haven't studied that issue, and that would be something that obviously would need to be reviewed. But I do think you're looking to put in a special assessment district in that area, and are going to be asking the business owners to participate in that, and I would assume they would have input as well.
Thank you very much for applying. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So currently, the redevelopment provides funding in two areas. One is for special events funding, and then one is for infrastructure. Do you have a preference of which is more valuable, or would you make any changes or recommendations to that method?
Well, the infrastructure, I think, has pretty well been discussed, that that has been in place a long, long time and needs to be replaced. I don't think the city has to bear all of that cost, but as far as I understand, that would be an important item. And to me, the appearance of the highway through downtown corridor is what is of interest to me, and its appearance in the downtown area. That's what I'm, that's what I'm, my hot button, if you will.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Besides the downtown corridor, what other areas within the community that are within the redevelopment authorities do you think needs attention?
Well, it's always the factor of money, but we certainly have, Highway 50 needs some attention in a lot of areas. I think that our streets in this town are at a point where they need some serious attention. The general appearance, when I bring guests and relatives to this area from other areas, it's nice to really have something very attractive to look at, and that wasn't the case 30, 40 years ago. There's been a lot of, a lot of very positive things that have happened in this town. I'd like to be a part of it.
Anything you want to add to us, talk about?
Well, I appreciate your considerations. I have not schooled real heavily on taxes and things prior to coming here. I view this as a learning experience, and would go forward with that thought in mind.
Are you still a member, with RCP, you still chair that?
I chair the board, yes.
How are you doing out there?
We're doing rather well, and there's several things that we're involved with, transportation programs, and some other things that keep our better-than-1,200 volunteers busy. But, yes, we're still growing, and we've done quite a bit of adjusting since Janice Ayers passed away, but we're in good hands now. Feel very good about what's going on.
Very good. Okay. Well, as Supervisor Bagwell said, and probably others, we thank you for applying. These are the hardest decisions we have to make. We make decisions all day long, but these are usually the hardest, so we want you to bear with us as we make these things, and go on, and do good things, regardless of how the vote comes out. You're welcome to sit and listen. You don't have to leave, so suit yourself on whatever you want to do.
Notify by mail or something?
We'll tell you. I mean, we have to do it here pretty quick.
I see.
So you're welcome to watch us.
Hang in there.
In action. All right. Thanks, Jerry.
Linda Ritter, for the record, sir.
I got you. Hi, Linda, how are you doing?
Very good, thank you.
Hey, thanks. For those of you who don't know, Linda Ritter's a former city manager here. Linda, thanks for applying, and I know you're involved in a lot of different things in the community. The question I have, you know, just one, why do you want to serve, and two, on the RAC, and two, kind of give us an overview of what you think about redevelopment, what it's for, how it should be used, things of that nature.
My interest comes from, I had worked, I got involved with the Downtown 2020 Group when I was working as an interim director for the CVB. And with my work with them, I got interested in developing a real plan for downtown that included more than just a downtown project for infrastructure, but also included, how are we going to get the right business mix? What about events and activities? What does that whole picture need to look at to really make it successful downtown? And so I developed a plan, we provided that to the board. From there, the next step was really to start talking about business improvement districts, or commercial area revitalization districts. And so I started working with the property owners, and talking with them, and I did this completely away from downtown, just on my own, to try to bring them to the table, to get them talking. And we had various degrees of success. It's hard to get people to meetings, but we were able to give you the results of what the majority of the property owners felt, which was, yes, let's explore the opportunities that a bid will provide for them, and general support for the downtown project. Redevelopment is a tool. I've always seen it as a really important tool that can be used to really revitalize, to create economic activity in your downtown. Now, let me take a step back. Downtown has always been very important to me. I've always, I mean, I grew up in Reno, I came down here quite often, to the museum every year as a grade schooler, of course, but Carson City's in a unique position in that we have a beautiful downtown. We have a real downtown, not something that has been remanufactured, or it's really, a lot of it is original. So we have an opportunity to really make something great about it, with it, which could make us very unique in the region. I believe a successful downtown is a, represents the image of a community. I believe that in economic development, by having a vibrant, beautiful, walkable downtown, you can actually convince companies to come here, because very often, now, it's not a matter of location, but the CEO can determine exactly where he wants to be. Where does he want to live? So by really working to develop our downtown and make it better, I think we can impact the entire community. My interest in the redevelopment committee, not only it's from my involvement with the various groups so far, but advisory committees are really important to the board, and that's a front line, and I want to be involved with that. When we talk about the downtown project, you could use the Redevelopment Citizens Committee to help vet some of those plans, some of those ideas, to start working and talking with the public, and that's something that I'd like to be involved with, as a volunteer.
Thanks, Linda. Jim, you want to go first this time?
Hi, Linda. Hi, Jim. Besides the downtown corridor, what do you think are the most important issues facing other areas of redevelopment?
Other areas, as far as the infrastructure, or are you talking about redevelopment area number two?
Correct.
Which is the car dealers, the South Carson? I think all the corridors are important. I do believe it could start with downtown, but I believe that creating a good overall development plan for the downtown, that did create a model for the other corridors, which includes South Carson. South Carson, I think, is interesting, because when the freeway is completed, you've got a lot of right-of-way there. And the question is going to be, what are you going to do with all of that right-of-way? When that street is given back to the city, do you keep it as many lanes as it is now? Could you take that property, that lines that, work with the property owners, the adjoining property owners, and do something with it, to bring in more retail, more activities, and other things? So there's some great opportunity on South Carson. The other corridors also, I mean, there's always room for improvement, so whatever we can do to work with the other corridors, we should, but understanding the Redevelopment Citizens Committee only deals with Area 1 and 2.
Good afternoon, Linda. Currently, we spend our money on redevelopment in two areas, special events and then infrastructure. Which of these do you think is more important, or do you think some changes should be made within that?
I've always believed that redevelopment, first, you've got to set the table, use, get the infrastructure in place to do what's necessary. In terms of special events, those can be, that's that activity piece I talked about, if you talk, look at a three-pronged approach. And using redevelopment to kick off events and activities, and if they're successful, perhaps the businesses, the property owners, will want to keep those things going. So personally, I believe that it should be used for special events, but not forever for the same event, but more as seed money to get it started.
Can you tell us your understanding of tax increment funding?
Tax increment funding, and we've seen what's happened with the tax increment funding, it's gone down with the decrease in valuations, but when a redevelopment area is formed, the value of the property is frozen. Any growth in that property, that increment, then the tax on that goes to the redevelopment fund. So the idea is, if you're successful with your redevelopment activities, you're going to have a larger budget in your redevelopment budget, because that increment's going to grow. Now, over the last several years, we've seen that shrink, and of course, that definitely affected the redevelopment fund. Hopefully, it'll start growing again, though.
Hi, Linda.
Hi, Karen.
If you, as a member of RAC, were tasked with developing design standards for the downtown corridor, what specific elements would be on your radar to improve upon or add?
Yeah, design standards, those can be pretty restrictive. I've never been in favor of a theme, because I believe an eclectic mix of properties, of design, can be very, very attractive, instead of trying to fit all of the properties into one specific mold. Perhaps some criteria as far as, okay, you've got sidewalks, you know, maybe the signage, maybe some of the façade, some degree, but not very restrictive. I believe that people, property owners, do have a right to do what they wish with their property, within reason. You know, maybe the hot pink, you know, building facade wouldn't exactly go, but to say, tell everybody, this is the shade of Accru you need to use, I think that that's going too far. Okay?
Anything you want to add, Linda?
No, I am here to help where I can, so thank you for your consideration.
You know, you've been through these on either side of the table, so you know the drill, and, one, I think on behalf of all of us, you know, we thank you for applying, and two, I thank you for your service to your city over the years that you've been here, and city manager in various capacities. You should know, it's appreciated for what you do, and I know you're out doing things on your own right now as well, you know, both personally and professionally, and so we want to thank you for...
Thank you. I chose to live in Carson City, and I will, I choose to remain in Carson City. Love this place, and I want to contribute back.
All right, and I understand, you're wonderful, okay. And you understand that, you know, however we vote today, I don't want you to stop.
Oh, absolutely. Nothing's going to make me stop.
All right, thanks. You're welcome to listen, too, all right?
Thank you very much.
All right. Hi, Craig.
Hello, Bob.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you and the board.
You were in this morning, too, listening a little bit, huh?
Yeah, yes, I was.
Very good, very good. First, Supervisor Bagwell reminds me that I should, I'll let her say it, but she could say it again, but thank you for applying, and she means it for all of us here. I have just a general question to get you started off, and one is, you know, why do you want to serve on the RAC? And two, give us your thoughts on what redevelopment is, and what it should be used for, and how it should be used, just some general ideas on the theory of redevelopment.
Okay. And hopefully, I don't ramble too much.
Well, try not to do that. We've got 15 minutes, we've got more if you want, but go ahead, that's all right.
You know, when you're not in control of your own event here, you know, you get a little anxious, but...
We don't have a red light here, but I'll put that up for you if you want.
Speak in front of 250 employees, but, you know, and I all know, you know you all, but you still get a little nervous. Of course, my interest in serving, and I'm sure it's probably common with everyone, is that I want to give back to the community, but more than that, I have a real passion for this committee, and that's because I was involved on the Planning Commission back when we redeveloped, or redid the zoning map, the, here I go, sorry, guys, the master plan, and which included then the downtown master plan for the first time. And so I'd like to see that, because our whole thrust was to make this, make it where we could develop a project downtown, and stay with some confined features that suited that downtown area. And so now I'd like to see it, you know, go to fruition here, now that it's moving, it's been approved by you folks, and it's now getting excited, and I would like to see us get as much out of that project as we could. As well, I have interest as being the, an at-large candidate, that I think there's other areas ultimately that need to be looked at as well, and living in the north end, the old Kmart building falls within that district, and even though some of the other projects that are coming forward under the 1/8 cents don't actually fall under our purview, but the other corridors, I think, are critical to redevelopment or economic development. And so those are some of the reasons that I'd really appreciate to be on this committee, and would look forward to serving on that. Now, as far as redevelopment in general, you know, you can look at the dictionary definition, and it just talks about the act of, the process of redeveloping or renovation of a blighted area, but I think in our case, it goes way beyond that. I think we have to look at the current community, keeping them in mind, and of course, you know, we all go, oh, jeez, more taxes, or whatever. So trying to redevelopment, redevelop in the city, and make it a viable place for people who want to come, you know, to encourage tourists, encourage people to stay, young kids to stay, our younger generation. It goes, like I say, it goes beyond, and we need to really be investing in the future generations here in town. And I think we can do that without putting a big burden on the current, you know, citizenship here. And so those are the things I'd like to promote, and I think we have, there's a ton of opportunities I could go into for hours here.
I'm sure you probably know a lot, being on the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
All right. You've been in the hot seat a little bit with that one, too.
Yes.
So you know what it's like to be in the hot seat. We've started, let's see, should we?
All right, Lori's next.
Lori, okay, Lori, go.
Okay. And thank you very much for applying. We really appreciate that.
I thank you for the opportunity.
The two areas that we currently spend our money on in redevelopment is special events and infrastructure funding. Do you believe one is more important than the other, or if not, do you even recommend any changes in the way we spend the money?
Well, if you go back, and I think we look at the bylaws of the original, why the committee was formulated, was to approve, review and approve incentive programs, incentives for redevelopment in District 1, and then expanded to District 2. And I'm not sure that in that original concept, there was, the idea of supporting a lot of special events was part of the focus. I think the ones we've done, and I think it's always helpful to, especially, let's just use the fair this year, seed money to get it going, brings in tourists, your room rates go, room occupancies go up, and so that all contributes back to the community in sales tax and all, and also promotes the community. But should that come before infrastructure, I have some difficulty in justifying that. So I think a lot of those projects, those activities should be self-supporting. I mean, we can give them some help getting going, but I think, long-term, they need to be self-supporting, or in my opinion, they probably aren't viable anymore, so...
Hi, Craig. My question is, can you give us your understanding of tax increment funding?
We just discussed that before the break, too. Brad, I have to say that I don't know the finite details of increment funding. I believe that it's based on how you, how your income or your revenues coming in incrementally can support other fun, or budgets and projects, but I have to say, I'm a little vague on that one, Brad.
Hi, Craig. If you, as a member of RAC, were tasked with developing design standards for the downtown corridor, what specific elements would be on your radar to improve upon or to add, since you were involved with the master plan from the beginning, so?
Thank you, Karen. Yes, I think, you know, every community looks for what their historic value is, what sets them apart from some other community, and I think we have a base here. The historic background of town started as a, I would say, more railroad town than mining, because it didn't sit on the mines, but we supported the mines in Virginia City. So you have that western theme, you have a little bit of the VNT railroad remnants still here, and so I think the old west, to me, without having to maybe get too fancy looking with boardwalks, but I think the downtown should keep that motif, that it is the western-looking town, the style of many of the buildings that are already down there. And so as we move forward, and let's say with, with, I'm excited about the Nugget Project and things, to try to make some of that fit in with that, and while we're doing that, I think probably four years ago, and you and I spoke about redeveloping motels that are just off that project on Stewart there, and I think, in my opinion, where this committee can be beneficial is to go out and work with property owners, and try to find a way that we, you know, if we don't have money incentives anymore, or as that builds, and hopefully we can, but maybe give them the resources, do some of the research, to say, you know, maybe you're, the best use for your property is no longer a motel, but it's retail on the bottom floor, it has either condos or upper-end apartments on the back, so you can get the younger kids downtown, and they can live down there in that environment. And so like I said, I think there's a lot of opportunities down there, and to just keep the current theme of the downtown.
Anything you want to add, Craig?
Oh, not, excuse me, boy, shoot me, put me out of my misery right now.
Hi, Craig. Actually, I'm probably going to word it better than I did the first two times, and I apologize to the first two candidates, but I know that downtown corridor is part of the redevelopment authority right now, but besides that, Carson Street, South Carson Street is in District 2, which will be coming up. And the other two corridors, what are your thoughts on all of that, those two corridors plus the south corridor?
Yes, and my thoughts are that even though it's not in our jurisdiction, per se, but I think as a committee, to take some of the burden and the load off of you folks whose plates are already so full, that we could do a lot of research, and I think the sooner we start on some of that, looking forward, doing some research, to see what would benefit those areas, I think would be very important, rather than waiting to... Rather than waiting till we're kind of like, we've fired the pistol and we're off to the races, let's look at and do surveys, or go out and do research and look at those areas and see what would best suit those areas. And like, like you said, you know, my end of town in between could use some, some help. And there again, we have some motels and things that maybe aren't appropriate anymore for our main drag as we go into town, but there's other buildings down there that could use some incentive by, there again, go back to the businesses. And I think, I think in all of these things, though, the, the group that's involved or benefits directly, and will use a downtown project again, I think the way most of those really succeed, if you go and look at a lot of the projects all over the country, and there's lots of them, we all know about them, but those people, the merchants, the property owners, have to have some steak in it, they have to have some skin in it, because that helps them, or I mean, that keeps them involved and they want to promote it. And so just for the city to go out and put it out there, and then they don't really keep it moving and take advantage of that, I think would be a discredit. But I think, yeah, I think there needs to be, the sooner we can start studying those other, those other corridors would be very beneficial. And I know that when we did the master plan, we thought about little, you'd call them small core groups where you could have shopping and residential combined at major intersections and things, so that there again, people can live close to the retail stores that they, that they frequent and things, and make it kind of a mini-community within the bigger community.
Thank you.
Now, anything you want to add that we didn't ask, or you didn't get out?
Oh, oh, well.
Then be careful.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
You don't have to say anything, don't worry.
Well, just in closing, you know, I know the, the other candidates are very formidable candidates, but I think, I believe that I'm most qualified for the at-large position as, as I think I have a broader and more experience in redevelopment. And just as another example, I came from the Bay Area in Sacramento over the years and converted two old Libby, like Libby, 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 on the table, 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 oh, excuse me.
A little old, that's okay.
Plants, plants from, that were downtown in, you know, in both cities, and converted those old buildings into, as redevelopment projects, into offices and shops and residential. You know, you see, the big one that I really loved was Sunnyvale, but the one in Sacramento, the old brick buildings and stuff are there and being utilized. And the Sacramento, the one in Sunnyvale was, in my mind, kind of historic because we had an old water tower that the city at one point asked us to paint gray, it had had peach, peach can on it or something. And, you know, it was right in the flight path of Moffett Field. And, I mean, the local community got so outraged, they wanted to see the fruit cans, so we had to go back and repaint. So you have these areas that you can do things with, and, you know, there are certain aspects that people really want to see because it was memorable to them. But I also have, you know, the experience of being very open-minded, being on the planning commission, as well as being on the capital projects committee for the sighting of the courthouse and the jail. And so you have to build a consensus of, of the people, and, you know, we'll all have a smaller, you know, some little idea. And I think that this group here, I can work well with the chairman, the other folks on that committee. They represent a different aspect, but I think together, we can make this all work. And there's, I think there's some great opportunities here.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
And thanks, Craig, for all your service to your city over the years. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, you're welcome to sit and listen, so please do, if you want, if you don't have Good afternoon.
Hello. Do you want to come to the principal's office?
Think you're what?
Does that come at the principal's office? It's my turn.
Oh, well, don't worry about that, you know. Brenda Dawquist, correct?
Correct.
Welcome, Brenda. You know, as someone once told me, you know, when I get, I was arguing before the Supreme Court one day, and I was out there shaking in my boots, and somebody came up to me and said, you know, Bob, they put their pants on one leg at a time, just like you, so don't worry about it. So take it easy, we're okay. We each got, we each ask you a question or two, and then we'll, at the end, if you want to add anything, we let you go ahead and add. So I usually start off and ask you some broad questions. And one is, why do you want to serve on the RAC committee? And two, you know, give us a thought, your thoughts on what redevelopment is, and how it should be used, and just in general terms, what redevelopment means to you.
I would like to be on the committee because, A, I, we moved here in 1969, so I've kind of seen Carson City go from, well, it's kind of where, like where, how the west was one. We were a very small town way back when. They've been talking about the freeway for, well, since then. Lived here, lived in northern Nevada, grew up here, graduated from high school, moved away for 20 years, and came back 10 years ago. It's, you know, when you're in high school, you think, oh, I want to get out and go in the big world, but I really realize that this is a great community. It really has grown. It has so much opportunity. And to be on the redevelopment committee, to be able to see the new things that are coming in progress, which Carson takes a while to get things moving, but that's okay. I just see that there's a lot of potential here. And again, you know, build it and they will come. And we're finally at a spot where I see that reality is going to happen, we're going to see some new changes and so forth. So I think that's exciting. I sell real estate, I love to sell the area. If you're an outdoor enthusiast, this is the place to be. And we, I'd just love to see us have that much more to offer here. Your second question was, what do I see that the committee is?
No, what do you think about, what's your thoughts on redevelopment? Just in general terms, what do you think redevelopment ought to be used for? What's it mean to you?
Well, redevelopment is kind of like recreating the old. Personally, I love an old house. I can go in and you can see this poor old house, it's used, it's, you know, it's seen its day, it's kind of like a town. Downtown, I remember going to Murdochs, you know, going shopping there, there was Mojos and all of that. You could go downtown, it was a really cool town. And those things have changed. We went through the eighties, you know, they kind of changed everything up, and now we're redeveloping again. We're bringing people back downtown, people want to be downtown again, they're tired of the big malls, not that we have any, but, you know, it's, redevelopment is reinvigorating, renewal. When I lived in Birmingham, they were redeveloping the industrial area, and they took these old, old, these big warehouses. And one of the coolest ones, it was a five-story, they had made spices there, beautiful maple floors, the spices were like four or five inches thick all over. And what they were going to do was build lofts. They had eight of the 13 lofts pre-sold prior to the guy buying it, even closing. That's redevelopment. And they were bringing people back downtown again. So I guess it's, you know, reinvigorating, taking the old, making it new again. I'm about ready for redevelopment myself here.
No, you're not. But you know, you mentioned Murdochs, and they got some smiles up here because there are some of us who remember, maybe the females remember going to shop at Murdochs.
You just held your curtain closed, but.
That's kind of an inside Carson joke, and, all right, all right. Let's see, start with Brad this time, and we'll go round that way.
Hi, Brenda. My question, which evidently is the hardest question, what is your understanding of tax increment funding?
Boy, tax increment funding. Well, I can, I can give you an answer, but I'm not going to say it's the right answer. I really don't have much of an understanding, I'll be honest, but what I would think that it would be is tax increment, the more taxes you, I mean, you have to pay more taxes in order to get funding to build things. I mean, one thing that I don't think people understand here, nobody wants to pay more taxes. They never do, but you kind of get what you pay for, is my opinion. I mean, no, but, no, I really don't.
Hi, Brenda. If you, as a member of RAC, were tasked with developing design standards for the downtown corridor, what specific elements would be on your radar to improve on or to add?
For the downtown corridor?
Mm-hmm.
God, I have to be careful. Well, I think we need, I think diversity is good, but I think we need more of a uniformity. I think that we have a lot of potential to renovate or redevelop or incent property owners to bring their properties to a little bit better standard, for lack of a better term. I think we have a lot of properties down the corridor that are eyesores that could be brought up to some kind of a certain standard. I mean, we don't need to make it over the top so they can't afford it, but I just think that they have a duty as being downtown, and they have, that's where you are, that's where you bought into, just like when you buy into the historical district, that you, there's some certain rules that you need to follow that brings it up to a certain standard that's palatable to a wide variety of people, to kind of get more people to come downtown. I don't know.
Hi, Brenda. Well, let me beat Laura to the punch. Thank you for making your appearance here today and putting your name in, so we do appreciate that. Thank you.
There you go.
I was told I had to get involved, so.
There you go. So thank you for being here. I know there's a lot of talk about downtown, but besides downtown corridor, what do you think is the most important issue facing Carson, South Carson Street, which is in District Two, and the other two corridors, which are not in the districts?
I think South Carson, I think that our next, the next biggest hurdle, I mean, just as being a citizen, is the traffic. I don't know that that was the best planned area. You go through town, and I know we've got this beautiful plan, and we're doing all this for downtown, but once you get past Lowe's there and go down there, it's still 35 miles per hour, and I know it will help a whole lot once we get the freeway to take all that traffic off. But traffic there is terrible, and then there are a lot of eyesores. You just kind of end up in, you know, there's the old armory there, I think that needs some assistance, what's going to go on there, and what's, what is the vision to pull that part of town with this part of town? I mean, my perfect world would be to bring the train over to the old prison and make that kind of like how it used to be up at the Ponderosa Ranch. And that way, people wouldn't mind coming downtown. You turn down Fifth Street, and you've got a destination, there's a shoot 'em up, I know I'm getting off track, sorry. But anyway, I just think that there needs to be a way to bring the south and downtown together. It's, I think that's probably your toughest.
Good afternoon. Currently, we spend our funding in the redevelopment on special events and infrastructure. Do you think that, which one is more important, or should we make any changes to our methodology?
I think they're both very important. I think the redevelopment, the infrastructure, is probably a little bit more important than the special events. However, I think that doing, I was very upset when the state fair stopped. I was forage growing up. I showed horses at Fuji Park and whatnot, so I thought it was great when they brought that in. I think that that kind of all goes hand in hand, because you have to have events and you have to have things to do as well. It's nice to have a pretty place to go to, but then you have to have venues and things to do. So I think they're both important.
Brenda, as you've already said, thanks, thanks for applying, and thanks for coming back to Carson City after 20 years, after growing up here and coming back. We should try to encourage more of that, so we want to, I don't know if you, have you applied for a position before here on one of the boards and commissions?
No, I've just been down here for the historical commission.
Okay. Is there anything you want to add that you didn't cover, that you want to say, or anything like that? You don't have to, but just in case we missed something, or you missed something?
No, I just, I think I've pretty much said, you know, I think Carson City, it's a great area, I think we have a lot of potential, I think that we have, there's a lot of hurdles because a lot of people don't want to vote for new things, they're afraid of change, but I really think that Carson City needs to make a change if we want to be a great destination, destination area. In my opinion, Bend, Oregon is very comparable to Carson City. Of course, they have a beautiful river, which we don't have the river going through town, but I just think there's so much potential here. And, you know, again, people don't want to have to pay more, but sometimes, you know, we really do, you get what you pay for. And I think we do have a lot of potential, and I'd love to be a part of, to see that potential and what happens.
Well, thank you, Brenda. Thanks, as we said, thanks again for applying, and these, these are the hardest decisions we have to make. We make a lot of decisions that people think are hard, and they are, but they're not as hard as these. So I've got a lot of great applicants for this position, and want to thank you for applying. You're welcome to listen. We'll make a decision here pretty quick, but regardless of our decision, we'd like to ask you to stay involved in your community, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Hi, William.
Hi.
Is it William or Bill?
Most people call me Bill.
Bill? Okay, for the record, it's Bill Hopp. How you doing this afternoon? If I'm repeating myself, and you've heard this before, let me just tell you kind of what the process is here. We kind of, each of us get to ask a question or two, and then if you want to follow up on anything at the end, please feel free to do so. And so, and we kind of ask the same questions of everybody, so nobody gets an unfair advantage. So I usually go first and kind of give everybody a chance to get warmed up. And my question to you is, I know we've got your application, but why don't you tell us a little bit about why you want to serve on this committee? And two, what are your thoughts on redevelopment in general, how it should be used? Any thoughts about it, good, bad, or indifferent? Just kind of give, kind of a white, white paper discretion of what you think about redevelopment?
Okay. Well, I think something like this is great because you get to, although you don't get to make any rules, you get to find out what's happening in your community, and then you get to make suggestions, and hopefully, if those are good suggestions, they get incorporated, but not to have the idea that whatever you say is gospel and, you know, it needs to be done. I think redevelopment is good in one sense, but if it's taken too far, then you lose the, what the feeling of the community is. So if you redevelop everything into modern buildings, then the, the whole feeling of the community is lost. So redevelopment is good, but it needs to be only done in a, in a way that you're not going to lose the personality of the community.
Kind of in a way that retains a sense of community?
Right.
Okay. Brad, you're next. No, where am I now?
Karen.
Karen, okay, Karen, you're the last, you get, okay, I, you know, this is the hardest part, trying to figure, okay, go.
Hi, Bill. And I want to thank you for applying. If you, as a member of RAC, were tasked with developing design standards for the downtown corridor, what specific elements would be on your radar to improve upon or to add?
An outdoor feel. I know I've had, I have some neighbors that are not happy with losing trees. I think trees are very important. I don't like cement, I don't like asphalt, and so having cobblestones, things like that, things that, that invite people to come in there and, and to, and to want to put their feet down and be there are very important.
Hi, Bill. My question, I know there's a lot of discussion about downtown corridor, but mine relates to another issue. And what I'm asking about, what do you think the most important issue is facing South Carson Street, which is in redevelopment number two, and the other two corridors, which are
I've only been here a couple of years, so I'm not sure, when you state South Carson, what, are you talking about the lots that are way out in South Carson, or?
No, South Carson, where a car dealership is, that area, through there, all the way from like Lowe's to the freeway, or the soon-to-be freeway, fair, down at that end?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'd like to see something done with that lot. And I think behind the lot, there's something also, that there's a big open lot that, that needs to be addressed. Since there's a casino out there, I would think that a casino would be something good to, to. to put multiple things in one area. I'm not sure that, trying to do something with a car, a new car dealership would be good. So, I think something that would be in tune with several of the, well, with, with the one big casino that's there would, would probably be a good thing. And maybe not a casino, but maybe like a hotel, a small hotel or something, to again, give, give people the ability to take part of, of what's already there.
Good afternoon. Currently, funding in the redevelopment is spent on special events and infrastructure. Do you think that's appropriate? Would you make any changes, or which one's more important?
Would you say that again?
We currently spend the money from our redevelopment on special event funding and infrastructure needs. Do you think one is more important than the other, or is there a different method you would think to spend the money on?
Well, depending on the special event, I think a special event, again, draws people in. Redevelopment, I mean, unless you're going to develop something like an amusement park that's going to bring people in. If, if you, if you do certain special events that are going to bring people in, especially events that are multi-day, that are going to give people a chance to use the hotels and rooms that are here, I would, I would think that a special event type thing would be great.
Hey Bill. I'm the mean one, just ask the other applicants. Can, can you tell us what your understanding is of tax increment funding?
None.
Thank you.
That's a good answer. Bill, is there anything you want to add, say, anything to?
Well, I'd like to be a part of, of the process. For a short time, when I was in Des Moines, Washington, I was on an advisory committee up there, and found it eye-opening, how the, how the inner workings worked, and, but I, I would like to, to help give input and, and try to be a voice for the citizen at large.
Very good, very good. Well, thank you, thank you again for applying, and we're going to make a decision here. You're welcome to watch that decision, but we would like you to know that regardless of what decision we make, we'd like you to, if you're not selected, we'd like you to make sure that you stay involved in your city and your community. We thank you for your interest in making sure that our, our citizen, our committee, our city moves forward in a competent manner. Okay?
Well, thank you for giving me a chance.
Thank you. And I should say, you know, we've heard a couple of times about the vacant lot down on the south. You know, that's owned by the state, by the way.
Yeah.
And I'm told that, that, I don't, I think it's still the case, but that, you know, that the state's kind of got that earmarked for the highway patrol. So, and I, you know, let them speak for themselves on that, but I think that's what, you know, why that area hasn't been developed. The state's obviously looking for redevelopment issues as well. So, anyway, that's what's going on there. So, okay. Board, now we have the unenviable task of making a decision. So, why don't we just kind of each go through and give the name? We don't have to necessarily go say why, then we'll see where we are, and if we get down to a debate, we'll talk about each individual characteristic, because I think we've got five wonderful applicants here today, and there's no right or wrong decision that we're going to make. So, let's just see if we can do it. Anybody want to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay, go. Okay.
As the mayor stated several times, this is the hardest decision that we have to make up here. And today, we have to tell four of you no, even though you're all very good qualified applicants, and we all appreciate the fact that you take the time to apply and want to give back. And so, to the four of you that do get told no today, I would really encourage you to reapply for other positions, because you are wanted, we do appreciate you, we just can't put five people into one position. I score the applicants, so, and I score them all exactly the same. Linda Ritter is getting my vote today, because she's the only one that was able to answer my question.
Again, I believe all the applicants are, are really the true candidates for this position. We're, we're limited to picking one, and my selection is Craig. Thank you.
I'm going to select Craig over Linda, because Linda serves on the debt management committee, and we have a board and commissions policy that we try not to appoint two people. And since Craig does not serve, I'm going to select Craig, plus he has prior planning, which I think our redevelopment citizens authority could really use a planner.
Well, I'm going to go with Craig, and it was your master plan involvement from the very beginning, Craig. We had that conversation, as you said, a long time ago. And, and this really needs, especially now, the RAC needs to be a board of expertise. It's really, really important going forward, so we need that direction. And my only reason for not selecting Linda was Laurie's same reasoning, so.
Not that I'm useless, but we'll entertain a motion to, to appoint Craig Malley to the Citizens Redevelopment Advisory Committee. I think we got to do it individually. Don't they have different terms here?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, so let's do the.
Oh, no, no, they're both the same.
They're both the same?
Right.
Okay, we can do one motion then, that's fine.
I move to appoint Court Cardinal to the Carson City Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee as business operator or property owner from redevelopment area two, and Craig Malley as citizen at large, each to fill a three-year term set to expire January 1st, 2018.
Okay, on a motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thanks very much to everybody. I learned a lot. I remembered Murdoch's today. You know, made my day. She says, yeah, okay. All right, thank you very much, everybody, for applying. And, and don't, don't be strangers to your community, please. Thank you. Okay. Let's take up 23B. This is to appoint Doug Martin to the Tahoe Conservation District for a two-year term. He's interested in his appointment. He's the only one, is that correct?
Yeah. Doug is not available this afternoon, but he is the only one who has applied
All right.
For this actually reappointment.
As we did with Court, can we, since we only have one applicant and he's unable to be here today, he does have an interest, will we take a motion to appoint him to the Tahoe Conservation District?
I move to appoint Doug Martin to the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District for a two-year term, ending December 31st of 2016.
Motion, and a couple seconds or second. On a motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay. Then the same?
Same for the 23 Charlie, for the HRC. Jed Block was here, Mr. Mayor, he had, he had another appointment. He had to leave about 10 minutes ago.
So, these are all reappointments?
These are all reappointments, one for one.
Okay, so they're, and they're all individual, there's no competing applicants in, right?
Correct.
All right. Board, do we want to do, let's take them all up then at once, and see where we go. Okay?
I'll go ahead. I move to reappoint Lou Anne Spelddadruze in the historical category, Dr. Gregory Hayes and Jed Block in the resident property owner category, to the Historical Resources Commission, each for four-year terms, expiring January of 2019.
On a motion, all discussion, hearing, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay, let's take up item 23 Delta. This is the request for payment.
Paying the bills.
Huh?
Yes, sir. Paying the bills.
He's agreeing with you.
Oh, you're agreeing with me, okay. Okay. Everybody had a chance to look at the, the list? Any changes? Anything you want to add? No? Okay, motion's in order, two, unless there's a discussion.
I move to ratify the approval of bills and other requests for payments by the city manager for the period of January 6th, 2015, through February 9th, 2015.
Motion, a couple seconds on the motion, discussion, hearing, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay. Parks and Rec Open Space. Well, do they need time to set up a little bit?
I'll get in.
Okay, get in. All right. Okay, are you ready? Do you need the audio visual? Well, and, we don't want to hear from you. Who you got with you? Mr. Scott? Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ann. Take us through the open, to the work program that you got outlined, and Bruce, jump in there whenever you need to.
Okay, I'll begin just the presentation and the introduction. I have with me Mr. Bruce Scott, who is the chairman of the Open Space Advisory Committee, and he will run through the work program for the calendar year. Actually, it is our calendar year, however, the items that we're discussing will also, will discuss the budget items, some of the budget items, when that budget comes to you in the next month or two. So, just after that brief introduction, I'll introduce Bruce Scott.
Thank you, Ann. Good afternoon, and I think you're probably in about the middle of your marathon day, so we thought that visuals might put you to sleep, so we.
That's all right. As long as it's still music, we're okay.
Yeah, right. There's a fairly detailed summary in your packet. I'd like to just hit a few of the highlights. Some of the things we talk about today will be part, as Ann said, of our proposed budget coming up, which Open Space will be considering at its next meeting, which is in March, and will bring forward to you as part of our proposed work program for 2015, 2016. We're in a transition, and we've talked about that before, but we have a brand-new employee coming on to take Ann's position. He will be at work for his first day on Monday. Technically, because of the way work hours work, his first day is a day off, which is Friday. So, in the private sector, I don't understand that, but I like it, you know? Some of the things we're looking at, and by the way, to digress just slightly, we're very pleased with the candidates that we had. We had some excellent candidates, good resource backgrounds, and we're real pleased to have a new natural resource specialist coming on. His name is Rich Wilkinson. We are anticipating that we will, we will, we would like to have an Open Space Park Ranger in our next year's budget. When that would be brought forward, we're not sure yet. It depends a little bit on where we stand from a financial perspective, but sometime during the fiscal year, we would very much like to get that position filled as a, as a park ranger. And we anticipate that being, to some degree, ranger enforcement, but not a heavy police presence, more of a background with some law enforcement capability, but really somebody that's going to do a lot of work, maintenance, support for part of our management program, signage, those kinds of things. That's probably a $40,000 to $60,000 number in the budget. We'll know more next time, but just as a heads up, that's something that we'd very much like to have considered by the board as we come forward. Weeds, the Weed Coordinator in Carson City, the position basically has been lost because funding from Cooperative Extension disappeared. We are working to put that back together. We do have a $15,000 continuing grant from the Carson Water Subconservancy District, and we are hoping to put together with the help of Open Space, some Open Space funds, some funds from other sources, some, probably an office within the Parks and Open Space area at the city complex out on Budai Road. But, we're hoping to put that together. We really see that as an important continuation of our resource efforts. Other management activities, Ash Canyon Road, we're on our third, are starting our third grant from NDEP for $10,000 for non-point source pollution, protecting Ash Canyon Road and reinforcing erosion control and reduction of sediment into that watershed. Fuel reduction projects, you know, we have the sheep each year. From a resource perspective, we're going to have to take a hard look this year. I would warn you that there's a possibility, we will not recommend, and as a result, will not, put the sheep out on Seahill if the resource can't sustain it. The ability with the drought of the perennial grasses to stay vital and stay active has been compromised to some degree. Ann and the new resource specialist are going to take a look at that next week, but we may either do it a little bit later, or we may actually have to forego that this year, in the interest of protecting the perennial plants and their, and their well-being. So, it's possible that we will not do that this year. The fire danger is not especially bad out there, because we have been able to keep down in, in past years, but we don't want to have a problem with, with overdoing or, or actually harming the underlying resource area. Capital Projects, Eagle Valley Creek Crossing, we have a bridge that has been approved, it's been designed, it's been funded through the Southern Nevada Public Land Management Act, NiPLMA, for $253,000 almost. That should go in this year. That will be a great connector on the open spa, on the trails program on the east side of Carson, along the Carson River. That basically connects the golf course with the Anderson Ranch.
Bruce, just so you know, too, there was a wooden plank bridge that went across the ditch there. It's now gone, as of this last week.
Okay.
So, there's no way to get across the creek, except to jump.
Yeah, that's, it's a real linkage in need. We're, we're trying hard to get that done as quickly as we can, but that's a good point. And we're, of course, concerned from a liability standpoint. We have a, a nice bridge crossing the Mexican Ditch over off of River Road, and it'll be a similar kind of a structure. But, that's, thank you, Brad, for that.
It's a good jump.
Yeah. Take a run at it. Okay, some of the things that are coming up. With the management plan and the Silver Saddle Ranch considerations, we have a number of things that we're looking at, and ultimately, will come to you. One of those is ordinances, or recommendations for ordinances, with regard to open space. And we'll have hearings, and I'm sure you'll read about them, with regard to all kinds of things, from camping to shooting, to off-highway vehicles, to other things. But, that's, that's going to be coming up through Open Space to you as the year progresses. Charges and fees, we're looking at that, particularly as we hopefully gain title to Silver Saddle Ranch. We, we do need to set up a fee structure for the use of those facilities. We're working on federal agency plans and project reviews. The BLM Resource Management Plan is out on the street now. It's in the review period. The March deadline has been extended until April. Open Space will be commenting on that. We will bring those recommendations to you for your consideration as Carson City's comments on that proposed resource management plan. It is not going to go very far with regard to OHVs, which is one of the big areas that are a factor, particularly at Silver Saddle. They're, to some degree, to a large degree, deferring to a subsequent transportation plan element. So, it'll be, I think, helpful to have the BLM plan in place, but it's not going to solve problems or really set up the way, at least I had hoped, we would have a linkage where we could have trailheads into the open space area that would accommodate some of the OHVs. we could have trailheads into the open space area that would accommodate some of the OHVs, and at the same time, have managed access that fit between both BLM and Carson City's access that will be primarily gained through the acquisition of the Silver Saddle Ranch, the Ambrose Park area, and that sort of thing. The land exchange with the BLM, we are told most recently that all of the local work has been done by the Carson City Office and has been transferred to Reno. I think that means it's moving forward. We are very hopeful that we'll see concrete completion of that project and the turning over of those lands to Carson City sometime during this upcoming fiscal year. The last thing, just as an informational, Ducks Unlimited has received a grant to do work to enhance wetlands and waterfowl habitat at Buzzies Ranch. We don't have any more details on that in terms of the amount or what would be proposed, but that will be a project that will be coming forward, hopefully as an enhancement for the wetland areas on the Anderson Ranch there along River Road. Land transactions are fairly limited. We recently purchased a small sliver of land, a raised property, just kind of behind the Maverick Station along the highway there, along the freeway, to have enough room for a trail. And Public Works is working on the design for that. Ash to Kings Canyon Trail is being completed by a great group of volunteers, helping tremendously to take advantage of a wonderful opportunity for that part of the trail. Muscle Power and a number of others, Jeff Potter has been a lead in doing all kinds of work there, and so that is continuing to go. The Ash Canyon Bridge, you see pictures in your board packet. The bridge actually stands up without that gentleman holding it in the one picture, but we really appreciate their work. Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act is going to a two-year cycle for funding, but they have readjusted the projects that they're placing as priorities, and we're excited because we think some of our trails are, the projects we've been working on in open space look like they're going to be higher priorities than Parks and Recreation-type projects that have historically been funded with that Nipluma money. Now, that's the money from Southern Nevada Land Act. They have, as I understand it, about $30 million, so if we can get some good projects in there, we're hopeful of putting a really good trail project in there that would potentially be able to be phased, so we can get the trail around Carson City really identified, and hopefully linkage is done in a series of, ideally, a series of projects that we could get significant funding from that land act. And with the new guidelines that they've put into place, our work happens to qualify more than it used to in terms of being a higher priority. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions and fill in any blanks, but I think that gives you an overview.
Any questions from the board? Anybody? Public, anybody in the public? I don't see any. Bruce, as usual, you always do such a comprehensive job that you answered all the questions right up front. Got it nailed. And, you know, I think I speak for all of us. Can't thank you and your committee for all the work you do. I mean, you folks do a real professional job at management of a very important resource, a non-renewable resource, and it's what makes Carson City a great place to live, in my view. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Please convey our thanks to your committee as well.
We have a great committee. I think we're all very proud to be on it. We really appreciate it, and from my personal perspective, I really hope we can get the Silver Saddle Ranch acquired and into operations and management mode, because to me, that's a major milestone for Carson City and Carson City Open Space, so. But thank you very much. The committee will appreciate those kind words.
Very good. Okay, let's, Supervisor Rayboud, go.
I move to accept the recommendation of the Open Space Advisory Committee to approve the work program outlined, calling for the administration of the open space portion of the Quality of Life Fund for management activities, capital improvement projects, planning activities, and land acquisitions for calendar year 2015.
Second. Motion by Supervisor Rayboud, second by Supervisor Bunkowski on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, carried unanimous. Thank you. All right, let's take up the actual annual report, just 24 Bravo. I know we've probably been through a lot of the report issues as they are, but please feel free to proceed as you see fit, okay?
Okay, the item in front of you is the 2014 annual report. So, this gives us a chance to acknowledge our successes throughout the year. And so, again, I will ask our chairman, Bruce Scott, to provide the report, but some of the items that you'll see here are also continuing to our work plan for 2016, some of the projects that continue, but we have had some successes as well. Bruce?
Thank you, Ann, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. As you can tell, when you get the second string, the two agenda items sort of run together. So, what I discussed earlier covers a lot of some of the activities that we have, and I won't reiterate very much, just to kind of highlight a couple of things. One that's very important, I think we want to recognize Juan Guzman, whose retirement in September was the culmination of his career and his term as the open space manager. Juan, of course, was a fixture in Carson City for many years, remains a character when he comes to Carson City, and we appreciate Juan very much. We are excited to have Ann as his successor, and we're moving forward with, I think, lots of enthusiasm, and we miss Juan, although we see him once in a while, but we want to recognize that Juan had a tremendous amount to do with the acquisitions and many of the other activities in getting us here. The committee gets credit for a lot of staff work.
We got, jump in. You want, we got, jump in as you go to.
Thank you. In your packet that was supplied, you refer to how much money has been spent in open space on the back page, but the table is actually missing. Can that be provided, emailed, and put out as late material or something? Because I'd like to see the list of the accomplishments.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Bruce. You know, we understand, it's a little easier to understand what Ann's saying sometimes than Juan.
Yes.
Nothing wrong with Juan, but...
We no longer have things that are lost in the translation, or at least we lose the ability to point to that.
Right. Okay.
Bruce, I'd just like to add, I still read the packets with his accent.
Yes. Yes, it's definitely there. I think from most of the other things that are on the annual report, we've touched base on. I'm happy to answer questions or to go into anything in more detail, but rather than reiterate that, I would leave it at that and answer any questions.
What are we going to know about the Nipluma money?
That is going to be a little while, because we do have one grant now, which is the bridge, which is about $275,000, but the deadline for submittal has now gone to a two-year program, and it'll be in 2016 when we actually make the submittal. So, what we will probably be doing, and I haven't really discussed this with staff, but my guess is we will be coming to you with some kind of a request to acknowledge a perimeter trail or something within the community that we can use as, in essence, the plan that we're asking for funding for, potentially in increments, so we have a document to tie it back to. And we haven't talked about that at the staff level, but my guess is it'll be kind of like a master plan for what we would like to have Nipluma fund over time. And so, it would be a very ambitious project that could be broken into pieces. One of the things that, in dealing with Southern Nevada, I think larger projects, even if they fund them in pieces, seem to be much more attractive if they see how they fit into the bigger picture. So, it'll be a 20-16 submittal, Mr. Mayor, and hopefully some response by the end of that fiscal year. So, it's about 12 to 18 months out there.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions from the board? Who wants to make a motion? Brad, go.
I move to approve the Open Space Advisory Committee's annual report for 2014.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bunkowski, second by Supervisor Rayboud on a motion discussion. Did I ask for public comment? I don't know if I did, but anybody want to weigh in? I don't see any. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, carried unanimous. Thank you very much. Thanks, Bruce. Take our comments back to your committee, please. Thanks, Ann. Okay, we're going to take a break here until about 3 o'clock, let the league get set up, and then we'll come back. and then we'll come back. Back to order, we're gonna take up item number 25. This is the master plan, the Carson City Master Plan Annual Report. Mr. Plummel, you want to take us through this, please?
Good afternoon. For the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. This item on the agenda is for us to provide the master plan annual report update to you and for possible action to accept the master plan annual report from the Planning Commission. This report is done annually and it's per statute. The reason is up there in NRS, and it's in order to promote planning and master plans in general. The Planning Commission is required to review the master plan and make recommendations regarding it. So we've been on track to do this around this time at the beginning of the year. We take it to the Planning Commission at their meeting in November, and then in early the following year, and after new members who are elected or on the board, we bring the master plan report to the supervisors for review. The report is attached. We include quite a bit of information in there, including the action plan matrix that was adopted with the master plan in 2006, with some updated information on there, not necessarily all-inclusive, but to kind of, just for information purposes more than anything, of all the policies and goals and implementation strategies that were adopted with the master plan. So I have a pretty brief presentation for you, just to go over a couple slides, a few slides here. And I'll start with the recommendations that have basically come forward. And the first two up there are right from the master plan and part of the work program that's already really been adopted by the Board of Supervisors for this year, and that the first one being to develop the capital improvements program for downtown enhancements. Large part of that, of course, of implementing that strategy as a whole is the downtown Carson Street project, Third Street project, that we'll be working on, and working on the design this year, working towards construction in 2016. And obviously, that's a big project that involves a lot of various staff members from various departments in the city. The second one for 2015, another policy from the master plan is to continue, and related to that, is to continue to explore opportunities to establish the Business Improvement District. Again, the state's term is Commercial Area Vitalization District, unless they change it in this legislature, which they're looking to do, and then it'll be something different. But, so that, obviously, that's a very big program. These are, this project that is this year are directly related to these master plan policies that were adopted in 2006, and that those will be, we propose to be working on in 2015. The last two up there are not directly related to any policies or action strategies in the master plan, but they're master plan related. We identified some land use map corrections related to public properties, mostly due to open space and other trades with private properties and public works in the last year or so. And then the last one up there is to bring Utility Corridor Master Plan Amendment to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, which is required per legislative action in 2013, actually, AB 239 in 2013, and concurrently, Douglas County and Lyon County are also still working on this, trying to work on it, working with the NV Energy and trying to get information. And so we'll be coordinating with them to bring that to the Planning Commission and Board in 2015. So just a few slides I'd like to go over, and these are, this is information from in the packet, but I'll go over and discuss them a little bit.
Excuse me, Lee. I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you talk briefly about AB 239? That does not affect or has any bearing on the downtown corridor from our previous conversation? Is that correct?
Right. So, yeah, AB 239, related to the last bullet, the Utility Corridor Master Plan pertains to large power trans, large overhead power transmission corridors, kind of, and, you know, I don't know the details of how big these lines are going by here, but these are basically the lines with the big metal towers, and it's carrying large capacity power, energy with it. So, no, it's not, it's not related to the type of power lines that would be going down Carson Street or through the downtown.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would say we certainly don't want those types of, nor do any of the property owners or business owners down there want those types of lines going through downtown. Okay, just a few slides, real quick, and this, and this kind of ties into, I know the presentation that Nick and the mayor will be giving to the legislature, just to kind of back up and see where we've been on development and where we are, where we're headed. So this graph goes about, goes back about 14 years or so, starting in 2012, on total number of residential permits. So this is, this happens to be residential construction. There's a couple others coming up that are roughly the same timeframes. Just to point out that the master plan was adopted in 2006, so it was in this kind of 2004 to 2006 range is when we were going through the process. It was adopted in 2006. And as this and the other slides will show, you know, development was at a pretty good pace at those times. Population growth was at a pretty good pace, and then we hit that point, and after the master plan adoption, obviously, a lot of development dropped off. And development is one of the key ways that the master plan is implemented. We have a master plan that provides for land use and infill for a population of up to about 75,000 people in Carson City, and that's with all existing neighborhoods and houses staying the same, and just using infill and other vacant properties, and with our water availability to be able to accommodate that much. This next graph here is for total building permit valuation, so this is kind of a gauge of overall construction and development, including commercial and residential and public. There's this outlier here in 20, in 2003, 2004, that was, this is, this section here is public, is public buildings construction, so I would assume that was the courthouse, probably around that time, a large project that kind of influenced that. But still, you could see in past years, leading up to about 2008, 2009, where development was in this range, and we've been kind of bouncing up and down, a little bit lower over the last few years. And as you would expect, total Planning Commission, total, not, no, sorry, not Planning Commission, there's another one that's just Planning Commission years. These are total planning applications, zoning applications, so it just, it follows the same pattern. There was a drop-off and kind of coming back a little bit, but still hasn't come back to a real fast pace of development level. So all of this translates into population growth and how the city's gonna build out towards, towards our build-out of about 75,000 to 80,000 population. With this graph showing on the left, in blue, is the certified state demographer population. The most recent projections we have from the state demographer are in black there. Those have varied over, depending on kind of what is happening now economically, and if Tesla, these, these projections include the Tesla announcement, so they're pretty aggressive, but I have to say that the demographers' estimates have varied over the past, whereas we've kind of kept a kind of, for the purposes of our water planning, transportation planning, sewer planning, we use kind of this, a pretty moderate growth rate, that red line there that takes us out to, you know, past, past 2060 before we get to build out. Even at the, even if the demographers' model goes out on a more aggressive pace, you know, we're not over 75,000 until about 2040, so I think even I'll be retired by then, so it's, we're okay for a while, for a while with this master plan. That concludes my report. We have other information in there. If you have any questions, Ann would be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Any questions? Supervisor Bagwell.
So, just as a question, on page six, on your land use mapping corrections, earlier we had a recommendation from Moss Adams that dealt with the assessor's office position for GIS. Can that mapping position help you catch this up? Is that something you guys could maybe look at? I don't know if it'll work, but I think that's the kind of expert you're looking for? And he's doing scanning work and could maybe help?
No, no, it's just a matter of bringing the ordinances to you. I think these are pretty routine things. We didn't feel they were critical enough. We had, we had other planning items on the Planning Commission agenda. We happened to get built up with things last year, so decided to postpone these. So we'll catch up with these when, based on other applications coming in, when there's kind of a break in other applications coming in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Look at them if you need map help.
Yeah, we need some more to do up here, too, so.
Lee, just to clarify, you know what the corrections are. You just haven't brought them forward to us yet.
Yes.
So it's not a matter of needing extra staff to discover what the corrections are?
It's a matter of processing, going to Planning Commission, preparing the ordinances.
Right. And then one other question, based on this slide here. Build-out, the definition of build-out is based on building out the available lots under their current zoning and does not take into account the possibility of redevelopment with high-density vertical construction?
It takes into account, so it's not all existing zoning, because we have areas that, like, for example, a Lampa Ranch, that's, that's, it's right in the middle of the town that has a master plan for future residential development, but it's currently zoned agriculture. So that, but, so that represents a build-out of the master plan land use map, which will allow the zoning to change to a, to a density that would allow that type of growth. And it allow, and it accounts for, it accounts for some infill in commercial areas and higher density areas, like the down, well, yeah, I don't want to say the downtown core necessarily, but like kind of the downtown area, it does account for some infill occurring at higher densities.
Lee, could you go back one slide? So, if I'm looking at the year 2011 to 2014, it's been pretty steady of what's been submitted for the application process versus, can you now look at the building? And that's pretty standard, from about, from 2011, it's been pretty consistent. Okay, I just want to clarify that for future references. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, I intended to note on this, too, that you could see with the, so the new commercial is the red portion of each graph, and kind of a big proj, or, and then kind of the upper part of that is all, all kind of commercial remodels. So a big remodel or a big commercial project in any given year can, because we're a smaller community, can have an influence in how they, how high, how big, how much there is in any given year relative to other years.
Lee, just a clarification. On page 11 of the draft action plan, under 51C, you still have the Nevada Small Business Development Center Counselor on staff at the BRIC to provide regularly scheduled training and other business resources. Is that something that should be corrected?
Yes, and that was true when this was prepared.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? All right, let's entertain a motion. Let's entertain a motion, then, to approve. Supervisor Shirk, you want to do it?
I move to accept the Carson City Master Plan Annual Report from the Planning Commission.
Motion by Supervisor Shirk, second by Supervisor Abad on the motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried, unanimous. Okay. Now let's take up 25 Bravo. This is a zoning issue?
And I have a disclosure.
Yeah. Disclosures are in order.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose conflicts of interest. Item 25B affects my commitment in a private capacity to the interests of an associate in my real estate office who represents the owner of the property at issue. Therefore, a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by this relationship, and because this is a disqualifying conflict of interest, I will be abstaining from voting on this matter.
Okay, any other disclosures? All right, let's take it up. Mr. Plummel, you gonna start?
Nope.
Who's gonna do it? Oh, Susan.
For the record.
Susan Dorpansky, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request to do a zoning map amendment, to change the zoning district from public community to multifamily apartment on the property that's located essentially at the south, the northeast corner of Mountain and Washington Street, as you see on your aerial here. And I'll note that this is a pretty old aerial. It's several years old. It actually shows some, the old medical office buildings that were located on the property at one time but have since been demolished. This is a more recent aerial of what the property looks like today. This zoning map amendment is being brought forward to you as a part of an overall development proposal for a memory care and skilled nursing facility. The applicant is proposing the skilled nursing facility and memory care facility on this property. It is unfortunately, though, not zoned correctly right now to allow for this. These, this type of facility actually falls under the congregate care facility in Carson City code definitions. And congregate care, while it's allowed in several zoning districts with a special use permit, is not allowed in public community with a special use permit. So they needed to pursue a zone change to go forward with this project. This is just a quick elevation, showing what the project would look like from the south side, and I know we're really talking more about the zoning, but just to show you what they're proposing. And then this is the site plan that they're proposing. This is, as you're aware, just south of the old Carson Tahoe Hospital. It's actually on Carson Tahoe Hospital land that will be sold to the Prestige Care folks at some point in the future before development. They went to the Planning Commission in January, and concurrently with this zoning map amendment, presented a special use permit application, which was approved by the Planning Commission, with the condition of approval that the zoning map amendment must be approved in order for them to move forward. So that's what we're here to talk about today. The initial discussions we had with the applicant indicated that they were gonna pursue a zoning map amendment of neighborhood business, which is essentially a commercial district that would allow the congregate care. However, in looking at the master plan designation for this land, which is mixed-use residential, staff recommended to them that it would be more appropriate to pursue multifamily apartment, because it's more in line with what the master plan designation is, as opposed to a commercial zoning district. And generally, less impactful as a residential zoning district versus a commercial zoning district. So that's what they have proposed today. The Planning Commission, just real quick, the zoning maps. So the Planning Commission recommended approval to the Board to move this property from the public community zoning district to the multifamily apartment zoning district, as you see here. It's relatively compatible with the surrounding uses. We have public regional to the north, residential office, and single-family 6,000 to the west, residential office, single-family 6,000 to the south, and then residential office to the east. Planning Commission recommended approval, 5-0 with 2 absent. We did have a few comments in opposition to the multifamily apartment zoning, one from a Mr. Jim Menath, who was, the comments were put into the Planning Commission record. The other one, we actually received while the Planning Commission meeting was going on, so that didn't make it into the Planning Commission record. Joan Rassler also is in opposition of the zoning map amendment. But our recommendation hasn't changed. I'm happy to answer any questions. And Chris Baker from Manhard Consulting is here on behalf of the applicant.
What was the nature of the opposition?
They didn't feel that multifamily apartment was appropriate in this location. They felt that it would be more appropriate as medical offices, as it has existed in the past. Unfortunately, moving to a residential office or a general office zoning district would not get them the congregate care, because it's not allowed with a special use permit.
If this is approved, would they take up the entire site that's being rezoned?
Yes. And I'll actually go back to the Yes, and I'll actually go back to that. So what they're proposing is that the building would be located to the north, and then they would do a park on the south side. And the reason why the building is basically pushed up against the north boundary is because there's a significant flood zone in this area that makes it very, very difficult to develop on the south side of the property.
Okay. I don't know, who's first? Jim, Karen, go.
All right. Susan, can, I talked to Mr. Manath's son to find out what his concern was, and basically it's the multifamily apartment designation that is creating the anxiety. Can the zoning change be contingent on full approval of the project?
As much as I wish I could say yes, the answer is no. It's either a, we change it to multifamily or we don't. Yeah.
This still has to go through the HRC as well, does it not? Because part of the property is in the historic district.
Just on this slide here, the only portion that's in the historic district is the yellow park at the very bottom left side. Everything else is outside of it. So they will need to go to HRC for approval of their onsite park, if you will. Okay, thank you.
Jim.
Yeah, on that, on the historic, there is no building going on there. There's nothing to meet code to their specification. It's just a park, correct?
Correct. They would need to be looking at our landscape standards when they do the development and then historic district requirements, but no building there.
On page 11, Tom Burney, is that how you pronounce his name, with Public Works? He mentions that the city can adequately supply the water use with expected improvements to the existing system. What does that mean?
Earlier this morning, you heard a contract for the East-West Water Line, and that actually is proposed to move further to the west in a future phase, and those improvements would supply this project as well. But I believe that they're right on the cusp, and they could probably serve it without.
Still on the same page. Item four, it says this site is concurrently under review for growth management for proposal use of more than 7,500 gallons of water per day. Do we have any expectations of what that gallons-per-day usage would be?
I believe it's in the range of 29,000 a day, and Growth Management also heard this at the same time the Planning Commission did, it's actually the same board, on January 28th, and approved it.
And still on saying item number four, it says, "Public sewer and water facilities at this location may need improvements to ensure the adequate water and fire flows." Does that go back to that same scenario?
The sewer improvements aren't really a part of that east-west transmission main, but as they move forward with their, you know, more detailed development plans, then the Engineering Division will look at that, and they will make recommendations and provide whatever the requirements are for them to upgrade the system to accommodate the site.
And this is a normal procedure that we're doing within the city. It's not going out of our way to accommodate this particular project. Is that, would that be a fair assessment?
That is a fair assessment, yes.
I'll look for my other questions.
So anybody else got any questions? We're always looking.
Do you know, is there an architect engaged on this project at all? If it's local or not, or just a question? Not? Okay.
Yes, there is, but not local? I'll let Chris answer that.
Mr. Mayor, Supervisor Chris Baker, on behalf of Carson Tahoe Hospital. A few things, I guess, one, Karen, yes, there is an architect engaged, LRS Architects out of Portland, Oregon. Reason being, Prestige Care is actually based out of both Portland, Oregon and Vancouver, Washington. So they bring their own architect. A couple things, first of all, I'd like to thank Susan for her very thorough overview. Again, I know we're getting into a lot of project-related or project-specific details. Again, we are just here for the zoning map amendment portion, but I'd be happy to answer any further questions, project-specific. One clarification, we did go forward with the growth management permit. It was 19,280 gallons, and those are really based on existing facilities. Prestige Care has over 70 facilities of this nature in the west, so those are hard numbers. They know how much water they use. We actually included water bills for previous projects. It's obviously come to my attention recently that the what-if, you know, scenarios for the multifamily apartment have come into question. Obviously, it is not the intent of Carson Tahoe Hospital nor Prestige Care to develop these as apartments. And I think, so much so, that obviously we've gone through the special use permit process, gained our approvals, we have preliminary designs and are in the process of doing final designs. So this is not some sort of ruse to do a bait and switch here. And one other point that I would like to make, or I guess reemphasize that Susan brought up, most of the site is undevelopable because of the floodplain concerns. So if, you know, there would be future parcelization or other things, that's not really possible. You know, what you see is what you get. We're really maximizing the site the best we can, and we're excited about the proposed project. So I'm available for any other questions.
Anybody got anything? Jim? Okay. Do you have any questions? When the growth management or the, when they took a look at the water, would they give an estimate of what the effect on effluent would be?
No. I mean, what we've proposed, as you can see, you've got the landscape planned up, we have kind of a low-maintenance section and then more of an irrigated section, green. We've got about a 50/50 split. So I don't think there was really any analysis given for effluent.
Okay, thanks. All right. Just looking for effluent. Huh? Just looking for effluent. Okay, anybody, any public want to weigh in on this issue? Board? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. What's the bill number?
That would be bill number 104.
I move to introduce on first reading bill number 104, an ordinance to change the zoning of property located on 1,001 Mountain Street and 608 and 610 West Washington Street, APN 001-201-15-16-26 and -27, from public community to multifamily apartment, based on the findings contained in the staff report.
Motion by Supervisor Abell, second by Supervisor Bagwell on the motion discussion. Just a little note that if we don't turn dirt when we're supposed to, I think you can understand that we're probably going to come back and rezone this again, just because I think the neighbors are, have an issue that we need to focus on, and I understand what you're doing here, but just to let everybody know that, okay? All right. On the motion discussion, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimous. Thanks very much.
One abstention.
Oh, one abstention, I forgot. Good you guys keep me honest here. Okay. This is 25 Charlie, this is the Nevada State Prison issue.
That's what I had on.
Some of the, got some guys out here. Mr. Drews, did you want to weigh in on that last one? I saw you walk in, you sure?
No, I'm here for this one.
All right, all right.
He's my backup on this next one.
You're the backup?
Yeah, that's right. Well, I might be more of the backup. All right, for the record, Susan Dorpansky. This item is discussion and presentation of the finalized Nevada State Prison Report to the Legislature. It'll be going before the Legislature, oh, sorry, 2015, in the current 2015 session. As we have discussed in previous presentations to the board, the mayor, Mike Drews, and myself sit on the Nevada State Prison Steering Committee, and that committee was created after the passage of Assembly Bill 356 in July of 2013. As a part of that bill, it was charged to the committee to develop recommendations to preserve the Nevada State Prison for use as a historical, educational, and scientific resource for the state of Nevada. The Steering Committee created the report, and it's finalized now, as I had mentioned before, with several sections outlining the findings and recommendations for the historical resource. And that report, as I'm sure you've seen, is very extensive and as a part of your, in your packet. In conjunction with that report, I just wanted to note, to give you an update for the record, on the nomination to the National Register of Historic Places, as you're aware, the Carson City Historic Resources Commission, the Nevada Department of Transportation, some of their staff, and then the State Historic Preservation Office have been working together to put that nomination together, and it's just about finalized now. It's been running concurrently with the report, although kind of a separate process, and it will be presented to the museum board in April of this year and then move on to the National Keeper. So we're excited about that, and hopefully we'll have it listed by the summer, barring any major issues. So that's just a quick update. This item specifically, just so you're aware, in addition to us presenting this report, gives the board the opportunity to support the bill draft request that will be going in front of the Legislature related to the prison. So that's kind of how the motion is structured today. For the details of the report, I'm actually going to turn it over to Mike, so that he can talk about some of our recommendations and what we'll be talking to the Legislature about this year.
Thanks, Susan. Mike Drews, Carson City Historic Resources Commission and Nevada State Prison Steering Committee. Just to kind of go over the report quick, the highlights really began around page six, where we get into uses. The proposed uses that the Steering Committee came up with are pretty varied, and I think you can see that when we go through the recommendations for use. There's a museum element, there's a commercial element, there's storage, industrial leases. There's a whole complex of buildings there, including the historic properties. There's 1970s-era housing units and things like that. And one of the first things the Steering Committee really focused on was, how can we best use this property? And we saw a number of multiple uses. The next is how do we implement it? And implementation pretty much begins on page 11, and what we're looking for is a partnership between state agencies and private entities to try to help fund this thing, keep it going, keep the properties maintained in there, to keep their historic character, and things like that. I think there's a lot of opportunity out there. And that's really the way that I think it has to work. There's no one state agency who can take this thing over and run it. The rest of the report, Tom, we really need to recognize Glenn Wharton and Tom Perata from the Preservation Society, who put a lot of background work together. It's a really fine historic document as well. And one of the features of that is for each property, individual property that we have there, we have a description of it, plus what we think some of its future uses can be, along with some of the issues that may pertain to use of those. The final pages of the document get into, there's a matrix here that looks at different land uses, different things that we can do, some of the pros and cons of doing things like turning one of the cell blocks a new museum and things like that, and then how we might implement that through the Legislature to get the funding and that kind of cooperation. So I think, in a nutshell, that's what the Steering Committee came up with. They did yeoman's work in a relatively short time, and I think it's a good report. I think it'll be really helpful to the Legislature when they look at it, to see where they're going and see what some of the issues are, so.
Very good. Anybody from the State of our Prison Society want to weigh in? Anybody? Go ahead. Former Superintendent Wharton.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Supervisors. I'm Glenn Wharton, I'm the President of the Preservation Society. I'd like to thank your staff for all the help that they gave us, and really a lot of support, and their support is very central to our effort to preserve the institution. Mike is very correct when he indicates that this facility is so large and so complex that it's going to require a multiple use in order to preserve it and make some sort of efficient use of it. Our hope is that the Legislature will take appropriate action that's being proposed to give us an opportunity to begin collecting funds and at least engage, and I guess what you would call arrested decay of the facility, so that we can develop a museum, so that we can develop it as an economic benefit to Carson City and a historic and educational benefit for the state. So if you have any questions, we're at your pleasure.
Any questions? Thanks to Myron, Glenn, and Tom back there for all your work on keeping this thing on track, and to Mike Drews and Susan, keeping it on track. I know you folks were at meetings all the time doing this, and it's a labor of love, and it takes time, because it's a large facility. But at the end of the trail, we can really have something to be proud of in this community. So I guess the message is, we're taking small steps, small bites, but we need to keep doing that, and so we don't want to lose interest. And the report that's been filed, it's been, I know Supervisor Littlemore, before he died, filed that report with the Legislature, so, and I'm sure that when the bill comes up to be heard, that that report will be front and center. So I wanted to thank you for that. Supervisor Abell.
I thought the license was a really good idea in terms of trying to generate funds with regards to promoting this. How far are you? What steps need to be taken? How can we help? What needs to happen there?
It's all in the preliminary stages right now. Once we get legislative support, I think we can start moving along those lines. The Sescua Centennial Plate actually has funds that go to historic preservation right now, so that's another way that we could help fund projects like this in the future, too. I think there's a sunset on that in 2016, but there's some interest in getting that extended as well, so it would be a good idea.
I recognize the significance of the prison to the history of the community and to the state. I just want to get clarified. My understanding is, once the property is transferred, transferred to the state agencies, my understanding is, the state agency then receives the entity and gets the property and all that goes with it. Is that a correct assumption? Okay. In this instance, the burden of paying the cost to insure the property falls on the state?
At the present time, it is under Department of Corrections. So it will remain with the state. The state will have all the responsibilities that go with maintaining and operating that facility.
Okay, so it stays with them, right? Okay. And that is, any unanticipated emergency maintenance they will take care of as needed?
That's going to have to be part of that transfer. I think that's one of the sticking points, is what agency is going to stick out their hand and say, sure, we'd be happy to take this? Because you look at places like Stewart, and you see the issues with that.
Is there a need for this board, I mean, I endorse this proposal, but do we need to have any funds set aside to cover any utilities or unknown entities that may create problems? Does this board need to set aside any funding for any reason?
Not at this time, no. I mean, as we're going through the preservation, and again, it is a state-owned property today, it's not owned by Carson City, you know, of course, I'm sure that everyone would love for Carson City to set aside additional funding, but that's not something that's being asked for now. I think our role as Carson City is to support what the state is doing for preserving the facility, and we actually are dedicating money, but that's through the Historic Resources Commission in moving forward with the things like the nomination to the National Register and the Historic Structures Report Grant that we had come before the board with a couple months ago. So that's where our funding dedication is at this time.
Just out of curiosity, is the state keeping up with the maintenance? In other words, is the prison in the same condition it was maybe two years ago or something? Or where are we headed? How much damage has been coming?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Shirk, again, for the record, Glenn Wharton. In regards to a couple of your questions here, the property does belong to the state. Technically, all of the state buildings and agencies exist and are held by the State Lands Division of Conservation and Natural Resources. So the ownership of the land doesn't stage change, it's just reassigned to a separate agency. Currently, it's with Nevada Department of Corrections. The question is, what agency will assume the responsibility for this in the future? At the present time, the Department of Corrections will retain the At the present time, the Department of Corrections will retain the property until such time as decision is made regarding either the construction of a new execution suite at, say, at the Ely State Prison, and that is a capital improvement that is before the legislature as we speak, or the death penalty is done away with. Now, that's something we're not engaged in, we have no opinion on, that's for the legislature and the governor to decide. In terms of funding for this, we, as part of our plan, we have indicated that there should be the establishment of endowment funds so that revenue that is generated by the use of the facility, either by private entities through the transfer of funds for rental from state offices perhaps, from admissions, to a museum, to movie production, that this money could be collected and turned in to the institution, returned to preserve it and maintain it. Obviously, the initial work on maintaining it is being done, as we speak, by the Department of Corrections. In their budget, they have a one-half-time maintenance man assigned to the facility. His other half is assigned to the Warren Springs Correctional Center. It's probably Lori Bagwell's fault. But there is some lightweight maintenance done out there. There are no activities there except for the current tag plant. The tag plant is scheduled to be closed down there at NSP, and that operation is going to move to the Northern Nevada Correctional Center, probably around April 1st. So at that point, there will be no inmate activity there at all. But Department of Corrections will maintain the facility because they have to be able to use the execution suite in case an execution is ordered.
Well, I'd also like to say, I think you're doing a fantastic job, and I just want to make sure, is there any way we can speed the process up? Is there anything we can do as a board?
I worked in government for, actually, 36 years. There's nothing that moves quickly in government.
Kidding.
You know, we have been struggling with it. You know, my board sometimes gets extremely frustrated over the slow changes that come about, but the reality is, we are making progress. We are, the governor's office has been extremely cooperative. They're doing the best that they can, especially given the fact that we're right in the middle of a legislative session. Joe Reynolds of the governor's office is helping us quite a bit in terms of coordinating with state public works, Department of Corrections, state fire marshal. We're going to be working with the museums. We don't know where this is going to land yet, but be assured that we are taking those small steps, and they have to be small because this is such a large facility. The state doesn't give anything away. We're an extremely conservative fiscal organization, so as you all know, you know, it takes time, and we have to be very careful about how we spend public funds, and we understand that. And we know that there are priorities that are greater than ours, but we hope to, what we hope to do are gather funds that are found, if you will, as opposed to taking them from something else.
Thank you.
Any other questions in board? Public? If I mentioned, did I mention Supervisor Livermore? I meant to say Assemblyman Livermore, so I always, I make that mistake a lot because I used to sit right here where Lori sat a lot. All right. All right. Let's bring it back here. Supervisor Aboud, you want to make a motion? Go.
I move to convey to the 2015 legislature the board's support of bill draft request number 625, a request for a bill to develop enabling legislation for the development and preservation of the decommissioned Nevada State Prison, consistent with the recommendations of the Nevada State Prison Steering Committee's report.
Motion by Supervisor Aboud in a lot of seconds. Okay. On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thanks. Thanks, everybody. Say hello to everybody back there. Myron, you say hello to your wife there for us, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Okay. And Tom, I understand somebody is talking to you about the wireless.
I'll say thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the last public comment at this juncture. Is there any public comment? I don't see any, so let's just stand, unless there's an objection, let's stand in recess until approximately 6 o'clock, but it will be 6 o'clock, and we'll have a joint meeting of borders with the school board of trustees. Anything else?
The paper said 5:30.
It's 6 o'clock.
I know, but the paper said 5:30.
Oh, boy. 6 o'clock.
Yep.